Good evening and thank you for coming out to the Harlan City Council Forum today. So the way that this forum runs is we have general questions that we will ask the candidates. The first thing we will do is we give them an opportunity to just introduce themselves and answer the first question. Then after that, as we do with additional questions, I'll have two minutes to answer each question and we'll alternate with the answers first. So with that, we'll start the evening and I'll just have our candidates introduce themselves and answer the first question, which will be, "What motivated you to run for City Council?" We'll start with Troy.
Okay, Troy Shalen, graduated from Harlan in 1991. After I graduated there, joined the Navy. Did six years in the Navy in the third power program, served on board submarines. Really low numbers. This one, I got out of service, I kind of did, went into public accounting. So I got my bachelor's in accounting degree and while I was doing that, I also got my master's in business. So I worked in public accounting for 10 years. Kind of got into more of the private accounting, working for one individual company. Got lucky to get a position here at Monogram. So been a plant controller at the Harlan plant since 2008. And in 2021, I got from Monogram Water Dedson Plant, I became a controller up there in the fall of 2012. I still have both plants, that's kind of my responsibility. Proud to say that I have a spouse and we got three sons. The youngest is a junior in high school, wants to graduate college, the other one's on the way to graduating college. So that's the things I love. Kind of really love the community, my wife's from here and I love being involved, just seeing what's going on within the community. And kind of really enjoy getting to know and understand what's going on and learning more about history and maybe what's coming forward for us.
Next one, last one, it's about the why.
So it's reelection. Kind of took Dave Peterson's position about six years ago when he came off the council. Got appointed to fill his role, I kind of thought that's interesting. Did reelections four years ago. So I really kind of love listening to what's happening in our community and kind of see what's coming forward and so it's in the future. So I really enjoy working in groups. Get the color code ready. Really love working in groups, discussion points, interactions, seeing nerve bells at viewpoints. One of the things I like, or I think try to promote in current society is if someone's got an opposite viewpoint, how we respond and act to respect their opinions. And I really like to hear other people's thoughts because we all have different thoughts, different backgrounds, different ideas. So I think it takes a group and I really just love our community.
Who wants to start their question? Well, I can choose the rest of this time.
Okay, James, yeah, same thing, just introduce yourself and let us know what motivated you to run for City Council.
My name is James Sheen. I was raised in Harlan, graduated from Harlan. After high school, I went to Rinkport Boot Camp. Did four years, three tours over there, including Afghanistan. After the military, it was time for me to get out due to an injury and I used my GI Bill to go to college. Started at Oklahoma State, which is where I met my beautiful wife, who's from Dallas. And I dragged her up here. And then we moved to Kansas City where I finished my degree in construction management. Started a home inspection company there and loved the entrepreneurial aspect of all of that. So from there, we moved back to a small town. We wanted to raise our kids in a small town, small community. I really love how I was able to grow up and the freedoms of just being in a small community. And started a business here and let's see, that was in 2015. So we've been, 2014, so eight, so eight years we've had our business here, Patriot's Choice Contracting. We now employ 10 people and try to get back to the community every chance we get. We have four kids, well, three and one more coming in like, what, five weeks? So that's fun. Yeah, I really love the community. I want to see this community grow. I have a lot of experience in leadership of small business, definitely growing a small business. And I feel that that and my college degree and things I've learned along the way in life would be a great addition to our city council. And yeah, I just, I really want to see the community grow. I want to see more people move in, I want to see more houses being built, I want to see more businesses coming. Not just bigger businesses, but small businesses too. And yeah, can I answer your question?
That's great. So we'll move on to the next question. And you'll go first. And it actually kind of plays off of some of the comments that we just made. You know, what is your stance on how the city council can support bringing additional affordable housing to the city?
I believe one of the biggest things that we can do to bring additional affordable housing to the city is just look at a lot of the smaller towns around us. They've been growing very well, Shelby, Avoca. They both offer incentives, whether it be grants or low interest rate loans to build those houses. Other programs you can do are, and there's other cities that have done this too, is, hey, move to our city, build a new house, live here for a year and we'll give you, you know, a grant, $10,000 or whatever it might be. And that could kind of work both ways. You could buy a new house, but live here for a year, modify it. You can offer other incentives such as move to our town, let's build a house, we'll give you a year free at our gym or city pool or just small little perks like that would entice people to come to a smaller community.
Troy, same question. What role does the city council should play in supporting bringing additional affordable housing to the city?
Okay, I think the city is an I Street project. You know, we may say it slowly took a fill up because it's a good, a good project. James here had, took a good opportunity to build a couple homes out there. So I think something like that in, in the discussions, like you know, figure out which ways are ideal to grow. Like he said, offer great opportunities and I think there have been a lot of great discussions with a lot of other business owners in town that have been, hey, how can we collectively group together to offer some type of incentives to bring people back to their communities? Whether it's people who graduated from here coming back and/or how we bring the people back to the community, I think it's a collective effort. And one of the challenges maybe if you look at the city side is, should we buy a property and have people build it? So it's trying to figure out if that's the right solution, take on the debt to purchase that and/or if you can get attractive purchase price with someone who wants to kind of be like the legacy of the I Street, hey, we'll give you, I think you said a good discount on the property, right? Here's potential to grow and maybe it's something that is just a small portion of grow, have a project with local, they got a large chunk of land where they can learn to develop so much at a time and they can get out to the rest of it. So collective effort, I think there's been a lot of discussions. I mean, the discussions don't become as much public as they should be, but I think there have been a lot of the council meetings and subcommittees trying to kind of ideas like that with other business partners in the community.
Okay. So now, first, Troy, I'll go first on this one. Speaking of things that the city can do outside of housing, you know, there's been some discussion about the need for some additional businesses. We all know that we need additional residents to fill the jobs that we have. So what role do you feel that the city council should play in economic development and job growth within the city?
Deep look into the entry entrepreneurial spirit Mr. James has here, his own business, right? Small business, but he's still, I think they're very courageous people to have their own business. You know, he takes along the larger responsibility of employing 10 people, which means it's a, you got a lot of pressure there. So I think small businesses there, but I think also working with how we potentially fill up any type of open building space we may have in the community and how we promote those and try to work together and then try to find maybe the smaller, smaller sized businesses that we can potentially either stop the traffic of people commuting out of our community, who can stay here in the community, work, sit from to the city or smaller towns around us. If one of those are medium or size, large sized businesses, I know very large business, you know, we'd be challenged probably to find employees to fill that business unless we're able to attract people to come into our communities. But find that type of business that we can grow with what services we currently have and we can modify some of our facilities out there in town, but support the entrepreneurial spirit for those that want to start a business and run a business.
James, here's ours.
I think it goes a lot into, it's similar to housing. We need to, A, first the space to either build new businesses or places for businesses. And then incentives to bring businesses. I also don't think we should sit back and wait for somebody to come to us and say, hey, I want a business. And what, I think we need to go seek out businesses, like what does this town need and where can we find it? And then either find an existing business that wants to franchise or, or open up a second shop or something in town, or find somebody with that skillset that could be coached into owning their own business. And then, I mean, it really goes hand in hand though with housing, right? Like there's no housing on the market now. There's very little space available, if any, for businesses. So first thing we need to do is find some space to develop those things. And then I think if you can get A, business or B, housing, or really need both at the same time, I think it would grow from there.
Okay. Thank you. No, you go first. Okay. You have to go first on this one, James. With some of the recent changes that have taken place, how do you plan to follow the issues or any issues that may develop regarding public safety and crime prevention and police community relations in Harlan?
So we recently lost our police department, but at the same time, we kept all of those same people. I do believe that the town is as safe now as it ever has been. It's a very good question. I think, I think the thing, I mean, as far as public safety, yeah, I don't know. I mean, our officers are doing a great job and I see them all the time patrolling our streets.
Sure, it's just because of the changes that have taken place. You know, how do you look to support and keep your eye and finger on the issues of public safety in our city, including crime prevention and then the police community relations?
Okay, as James alluded to, we kind of did, we have the sheriff's department here recently with a 2018 agreement for police services. Very tough decision, emotional, people involved. I still believe it allows us to have a stronger force, stronger presence in the community as we struggle to fulfill our police department to get to full manage where there's a balance between hours work, hours off. So getting that to where you have one, one police department or sheriff's department and supporting them in our communities. You know, I hope that our community has a lot more respect for officers than you might see in other communities, unfortunately, the news. So I think our officers are very well respected and I think we continue to support them. And I'm looking at it as part of that, that's kind of another one, for coming up protection wise and what that supplies to our community, what's, can be taxed, can't be taxed, but just supporting the sheriff's department and the city and that community to kind of keep, my view, provide better, more service out in the community, more patrol hours, stuff like that. It's one uniformed department that supports us here and supplies our community, our community from our, it's outside Harlan, but the schools, districts, law, slowly knows, we're going to get a job done, I think, can reach out for not Harlan, but also take it to Shelby County.
Okay, and we're going to have another question that's just kind of based on some changes that have taken place. What this is, is these changes are taking place regarding property taxes and how cities can use them, how citizens can collect them. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on what you think about property taxes, how they impact the residents of the community, how they impact the businesses of the community, and also how they impact the city's budget.
I'm an expert in the new rollbacks the government signed into place. I know that's something new that's been thrown at the community, somehow the residents are taxed or collected and the amount of money comes back in the community. So we're trying to be very, current council, the administration, they're very conservative, make sure that the city's covered for what they need to be the proper changes in the funding. One thing I think we've done a good job is hired the administration to cut the tax level pretty consistent, about 17%. So then I think that helps our community members kind of know, hey, my property tax are this. And then it's obviously one change based on your appraised value and other things, but just knowing within the city that they're trying to maintain the tax level consistent. And I think that helps, and the joy of our citizens who are closer to retirement age, that's the joy of our citizens, I think that helps make it a little more favorable to them, that you know it's going to be consistent. But still kind of waiting to see how the government's, things change and using the resources the council has there to make sure we all understand the change in the funds are in, like that kind of things come their way.
You say the question again.
Sure. So there's changes that have taken place in property taxes in regards to how the city can collect them and how they can use them. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on property taxes and how they impact the residents of Harlan, how they impact their businesses of Harlan, at the same time as they impact the city budget of it.
Well, every time property tax goes up, it affects everybody, especially in the community like ours. Most people here probably live on a very limited budget with not a lot of sway, either way. It definitely impacts business, socially businesses that own properties. I know that I myself have paid a lot more property tax this year than usual. However, I'm not necessarily afraid of that as long as that money is being budgeted properly and is going to the right things that the city either needs for repair or growth. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to get out of my fair share of property tax. I actually think that paying property tax is a lot better than paying a lot of these other taxes. So you know, I'm all for the, the raise of property tax so we can have an EMS service. I think that's very important. I think that's a, I mean, it's a different, a vital organization that this community needs. Not having an EMS service would be detrimental. You know, raising property taxes for the school in our new additions, I was all for that. Obviously, I have four kids that still need to start or finish. Yeah, it just comes down to making sure that the city is using the money properly and that it's budgeted in a manner to fix things or build new things that are needed now versus what can wait a few years. Yeah.
So kind of keeping on this, this theme of changes, we've had changes that aren't a lot of force, but there's going to be changes in the budget that aren't being caused by us, but you're going to have to, you know, react to those changes. How are you going to keep the citizens of your ward informed of these things that are taking place and engage them in the decision-making process for the city?
Well, I'm a small business owner, so my phone number is all over town. If you can't find it in 500 different places that are not looked hard enough. So as far as I'm concerned, if there's anybody in my board, if I were to be elected, that had any question whatsoever, feel free to call, text, email, however you want. At the same time, can you say the question another time?
Well, yeah, I'll simplify it. It's just, you're going to be, you know, there's, there's a lot of conversations, a lot of decisions that are made at the city council. How are you going to keep the citizens of your ward informed of those things that are taking place?
Well, the best way to inform anybody that's staying is through social media, Facebook group messaging. I mean, start a page, just, Ward 2, you can go from there, Ward 4, whichever ward I'm in. And yeah, I mean, just constant communication. I would definitely encourage anybody that had questions within my ward to, to reach out to Kansas Town. I'd want to know what everybody's thinking so I can make the best decision for everybody that I'm supposed to be, you know, being an example for.
So I think a lot of our encouragement in the 10 day meetings we have with the city council, also I think the city website, the officials are on there. Give yourself a phone number, a phone number and also email address or contact information so people can reach you that way. I think taking people's calls and listening to them. Another part is, as probably James runs to, a lot more than I would, I'm a community, talk to people and they come up, talk to you, you know, kind of brush them off, you talk to them, let them talk to you and interact with them, that way we'll see them. That is simply, I don't really do the social media, so I think just actually listening and talking to people if they call me, email, see you in person.
Well, we've seen recently and likely for us during Harlan, we have had to deal with it and it, but it's one of those, it's not if, it's when. So what are your thoughts on how the city can help prepare for emergencies and natural disasters that may take place?
I think people need not be aware of how much interaction the EMAs and the county and the cities all have, volunteer fire departments and all those sort of hospitals and stuff in the cities. How much interaction they actually do in preparation for stuff. I think it goes unseen, the time, the training, the communications, the interaction, we have the larger businesses, I mean, have larger community systems and stuff like that. So first responders, everybody in the community kind of knows what they're dealing with, any type of business and/or planning for a future event. I think they're very well prepared, it's very well communicated, followable communities in Harlan themselves with everybody working together.
I would agree. I have pretty good friends who are a lot of the first responders and we recently remodeled the emergency management downstairs basement room, little bunker room where all the TVs and everything are. I was very impressed with all the technology that Harlan has and what we have access to. And I mean, I think that we are, to my knowledge, we're always prepping and we are prepared. As far as the firefighters are, EMS, obviously we need to make sure we can retain that and the sheriff's office as well.
So as part of our most recent community health survey, one of the things that came up was public transportation and a need for more, whether it's medical trips or just giving people to appointments, things like that. What role do you feel the city should play in making sure that that's a hit?
I would say that's a huge responsibility of the city to provide some sort of a public transport, whether it be, you know, kind of like the, like a bus or something that you can schedule to pick you up and take you from place to place, especially in our community where there's a lot of older people that do need to get to the hospital back and forth and maybe can't drive. Yeah, I would say that, that a public transportation system is a way that should be obviously ensured.
I think we look for agreement with SWI, because I think that might be part of our agreement where we can get that transportation, if not provide contact information to provide that to our community. Because I think that is one part of it, the offer of transportation for those types of services. If not encourage other businesses, a lot of them are never funded, I think, to make sure we have the services that we communicate for our public. Right now, it's quite not, it's not really part of our department to have transportation for those types of services, but to communicate if there are institutes that you provide.
So as we're trying to attract new people to come and locate here in Harlan, study after study shows that some of the things that they're most interested in is pedestrian infrastructure, cycling capabilities, basically outdoor recreation. Now, in the past, we have, you know, we've got our parks that have their walking trails. We've passed ordinances to build sidewalks throughout the city. But what other things do you think we could do to attract people here using pedestrian, cycling infrastructure, other outdoor ways to get around them?
I think you can go for the smaller ones, like we just did the water entrance on the east side of town, so it's a service that's a small portion of the public, but kind of see what other interests there are. You know, some people who bicycle say, that's what we have as we have, we really don't got the space to make designated bike trails per se. But I think we've done a great job with the parks. While the parks haven't been remodeled here the last five years, remodeled and wore a facelift and kind of promoted them and what other activities we can provide. I think there's a lot of activities we all don't know where, we may not participate in them. So I think just make sure there's a list somewhere on the city side that promotes all the different activities that are out there.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree. We, I think we have great parks. I know we just got recently a bunch of, call it gym equipment at Pioneer Park and we have great walking trails. The, I would also agree that they're adding bicycle lanes per se, would cost quite a bit of money on the streets, you have to take up a lot of easement and I don't know if we're quite ready for that yet. I don't really see too many bicyclists out and around. One thing that I think would be a great addition, obviously it's all about worship and patience for it, but there's some small towns around us that built splash pads and kids love those. I think that'd be a fun thing.
Let's get back to changes in the budget and ways that we can offset those changes. What are your thoughts on how a city of Harlem can collaborate with neighboring cities and regional authorities to address shared challenges?
You wanna give us an example of a shared challenge?
Any example? Some examples of shared challenges would be things like, um, heavy equipment needs that aren't something that we have to have every day. But, um, the perfect example is for between two businesses. But the Country Club and the local golf course both share the cost of a piece of equipment that they can both use and both need all the time.
Okay. Um, yeah. Really good question. I mean, if it's along the lines of shared equipment, I mean, I don't know per se what the city necessarily would have that we wouldn't really use all the time, maybe a street sweeper or something like that, that I suppose could be easily shared with the surrounding city or cities. Whether it be one day we use it and we can share five cities. Or, I mean, if we wanna stick on the lines of equipment, if we just rented the equipment that we didn't use all the time. Which would save lots of money, especially the last few years, equipment prices have gone through the roof. For example, this last skiller I bought, small sample, was ninety thousand dollars. Four years ago, this skiller I bought, similar in size, was forty thousand dollars, so. I mean, prices of all that stuff go up. I, I guess it would have to be the parks department or the city, um, streets department that would have to do the sharing and not everything would have to be shared. I'm really just talking myself into a hole, so here you go.
Time to, in the city itself, the departments have done a great job of sharing equipment, right? Hey, I don't need my own skiller, we can share. So they've done that. I also think, not being afraid to ask another community, hey, if you hear about this, maybe this is an opportunity for us to share. Like you mentioned, the golf courses, but there should be, you know, we have the city and not only the county, but we have a lot of smaller communities around us and it's an opportunity to say, hey, yeah, this piece of equipment's really expensive, but maybe we can do some type of sharing here and not be afraid to ask. Ask around as we're getting into those types of things to make sure we have a potential opportunity to share.
Okay. Um, share some examples of past community initiatives or projects that you've been involved with that demonstrate your commitment to the city's wellbeing?
Hey, I think obviously, uh, getting on the city council a while ago, doing that and kind of learning that way, but I think also knowing myself, a lot of other people just volunteer if you're asked to. You know, a lot of people are quiet. They wanna volunteer in the background, they may not want to lead a project, they want to volunteer. One I'm working on is more of the work-related, uh, Phil, you want to? But give me life for J.J. Jensen ballpark, kind of working on that committee. So that's kind of a personal and work-related and also the city itself, but that's a large, um, large, large project we're working on, takes several years without, and obviously, but I think just people calling and asking, just say, hey, I'll do that. I mean, I guess I'm not one to be the focal point or the leader. I'm more, I say, if anyone's in help, I'll come help you, that type, so I'm not really good at self-promoting.
Well, my wife and I have done several projects, I guess. We have taken, uh, a few buildings downtown and really turned them around. Ones that have been vacant or just really ugly for a long time. And we've done, we, well, we were able to get facade grants, which are nowhere near enough money to make those buildings nicer, but it helps. So we've donated a lot of our own, um, money into some of those buildings. Other things that my family does is every year we donate, um, enough for one officer to go to, um, any course that he wants to go to. Last year, we sent somebody to a weapons training course that he picked, so we paid for that whole trip. We do a lot with the Boy Scouts, uh, we donate a lot to the Boy Scouts and, we let them use our facilities for merit badges or popcorn delivery. What else have we done? Really anything. I don't like things that are messy or dirty looking, so sometimes I get trouble by my bookkeeper back there for spending too much money on things just to make them look better. And, um, I don't know. That's what I got.
Okay. So, starting with a date that we reached the end of the form and that we have now is closing statement, so anything you want the public to know about you, know about your campaign, um, know about thoughts that you have regarding how, uh, you know, the city can, can grow and be improved over the next few years?
Ready, go?
Ready, go.
So I guess if I were elected, I would really like to focus on the growth and development for small business, um, and housing and, and I would like to do whatever I can do to increase our population. Obviously, that's not something I can do by myself, it would require the works of the entire city to help. But I'm, I'm definitely very big on that. I don't really feel that I'm running for, for myself. I'm running for this for the people. I wanna be a voice for my ward. I have always kind of been a leader and that, that guy that does lead necessarily, or does lead from the front. And I know there's a lot of voices and opinions out there that people don't necessarily want to, say out loud, although I can tell you that I really don't have any problem doing that. Sometimes it's good or bad, but, uh, I just really want to contribute, you know, my time, my skills, my knowledge, everything that I've learned in the last decade to, uh, help the city grow, be better, be bigger, be self-sustaining. Thanks.
Just the past six years, really enjoyed being on the city council, like those types of things. It's kind of like the school board, give a lot of rewarding conversations. You get to learn more about what goes on within the community. Sometimes it can be frustrating because it's government and it takes way too long to do something. But sometimes that's, that's the tough part, it's just that I feel like you're waiting. A change is a big point, you know, try to keep growing our community, right, promoting our community. Try to find different ways that not all of us, everybody's gonna take different, and listen to everybody's different viewpoints, because ideas will come up that way and not be, um, just being wide open or open-minded to listen to other people's ideas they come up with, because we all got our different ideas. I'm a very quiet person, more of a strategic thinker, um, that type of way, so I'm, I'm quiet. But I kind of really enjoy the conversations and listening to, hey, try this idea. You work a lot with the economic development, the chamber, and that, groups like that, to kind of figure out how do we work together collectively? And also, you know, how can we, um, together? Got a lot of people who have a lot of pride, got a lot of great volunteers in our community. I think a lot of people don't realize how many people, a lot of volunteers and how many hours people put into do things in our community. So I think just kind of continuing on with that trend on council. We're a great financial position, but then yes, how do we take that next step and try to get more growth coming? It's challenging and bouncing all the buckets, um, because you operate with a budget. It's a tough budget sometimes, uh, but how we grow together as a community and try to get a unified approach and listen to everybody else's viewpoints and see how we can keep attracting people who may wanna come back to the community. We got a lot of great positive, lots of positive things. We got now saving the school system. It's, you know, with all those kids in it that come from our school system. We got a lot of those great attributes in our community.
She's done, she said three minutes. Okay.
Just not finished. Yeah, let me take the bullets.
No, I did, I'm not good. Okay. I just thought it was a fact, very calculation. Yeah, yeah, that's not my fault, that's yours. So, thank you to everybody who came out tonight, I really appreciate the attendance. A reminder to those who will be watching this, uh, on video later, that, uh, the polls are open now and also early voting is open now, mailing voting is open now. Election Day is November seventh, so make sure you get out, make sure your voice is heard. We have some very important items on our ballot this year. And just a reminder, um, in case we help to change your mind, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry supports both EMX, so make sure you get out and vote EMX. Thank you both for the evening. Good luck to both of you on, on election day and the wrap-up. Thanks again.